Good evening, and welcome to the Revere City Council Meeting of December 6, 2021. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November 22.
So move. All in favor, all opposed? Show audit.
Mr. President.
Council McKenna.
Thank you. I'd like to make a point of personal privilege, please.
Go right ahead.
Since August, Revere has had a gigantic problem with shopping carts being left all over the city as litter. I put a motion in for them to be picked up by the DPW, and I just want to give kudos to Paul Agenzio and the DPW staff. They've collected hundreds of shopping carts. If you go in back of Stop &amp; Shop, you'll see them returning them, and they're just in a pile. But I just want to say that I call them every single day and tell them the location of the shopping carts, and within a couple of hours, they're removed. So I just want to give kudos to the DPW and Paul Agenzio for doing a fabulous job for the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. No, you can't speak on a point of personal privilege. No.
Motion to suspend rules.
No, it's not allowed by our rules. Sorry.
Next, roll call.
Yes.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to WBZ reporter and Revere resident Cheryl Fandaka for her diligence and reporting on the removal of parking meters on Revere Beach. Without her coverage, the meters would have never been removed.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, Cheryl's not here tonight. We will give her that presentation later. But clearly, if it wasn't because of the people and, more importantly, Cheryl Fandaka's reporting on this issue, the meters would still be there. And I believe that even though she has her accolades in the news world, I believe in the city of Revere, she should get them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that a certificate of appreciation be awarded to Pat Malkiano, Cindy Kejna, Roxanne Aello, Rick Sarno, Peter Martino, Wayne Rose, and on behalf of the residents of the Jack Satterhouse as a whole for their advocacy against parking meters on Revere Beach.
Bring him up.
I'm going to check right there.
Gotcha.
Did he pay you fees?
Yeah.
He was.
Did he pay you fees?
He, I have to check right here.
Okay, good.
It's good.
All right, just checking.
Wow. Hi, Cindy, how are you?
Good.
We're going to have to have someone give Rick Sarno's out.
Yeah.
Roxanne.
Come on, come on, come on. Don't be shy.
I'm a little disabled. I'm a little disabled.
Do not fall.
I checked the meter.
Folks, this is democracy at its best. We all know what happened down at Revere Beach, and we all know what happened regarding the meters. And the people behind us were part of this process. In fact, they were the process. They were the people that helped, fought, and energized everybody within this council, within the city, to stop the meters from being put on Revere Beach, America's first public beach. And we work collectively as a council, as a community, to stop that. And so, without further ado, I'd like to recognize everybody that's on the stage and those that are not on the stage, and I'm going to be doing so by reading Cindy's first. Got to put on the glasses. And Council President, do you have anything to say before we go forward?
Say it again?
Do you have anything to say?
I have a lot to say, but on this matter, it'll just be a few words. I want to thank you all for your unselfish work, and it was hard work, and everybody was out there fighting hard for something that didn't look like it could be rescinded. But it just goes to show you that if you keep fighting for what's right, sometimes you get your way. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Cindy, if I pronounce your name incorrectly...
It's quite all right. It's all right. I listened to Kena.
Kena, there we go. It's killing me already. See a Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement for your advocacy against parking meters on Revere Beach, which would have disproportionately affected seniors residing at the Jack Satterhouse, residents of Revere, which is a working-class neighborhood, and Revere immigrants and underserved population. Special recognition is hereby presented to Cynthia Ken...
Kena.
Kena. The certificate of appreciation presented by my city council of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens, the 6th day of December of the year of our law, 2021, and of the independence of the United States of America, the 245th. Cindy, thank you so very much for your hard work.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Roxanne, what did you do to your leg?
I was kicking the meters.
Oh, my God. I wouldn't doubt that. My God.
I was surgery.
God bless you.
Thank you.
And Roxanne, this is easier. Aello's easier to pronounce. But that said, an acknowledgement of your advocacy against parking meters on Revere Beach, which would have disproportionately affected senior residing in the Jack Satterhouse, residents of Revere, working-class neighborhood, and Revere's immigrant and underserved population. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Roxanne Aello. The certi...
Aello.
Aello. I'm having a hard time today.
It's okay.
The certificate of appreciation presented by the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the 6th of December in the year of our law, 2021, the independence of the United States of America, 254th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sarno.
Yes.
You didn't break anything, did you?
Nope.
There we go.
Nothing broken.
Thank you. Again, this is a certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement of your advocacy against parking meters on Revere Beach, which would have disproportionately affected seniors residing at the Jack Satterhouse, residents of Revere's working-class neighborhood, and Revere's immigrant and underserved population. Special recognition is hereby accorded to you, Rick Sarno. Didn't screw that up, did I?
No.
This certificate of appreciation is presented by the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizen, the 6th day of December in the year of our law, 2021, and on the independence of the United States of America, 255th. Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose. Wayne, thank you for what you did.
Last but not least.
Yes, exactly. Well, we got a few other people here, but we're going to give them off to you to send back to the Satterhouse and so forth. This city of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement of your advocacy against parking meters on Revere Beach, which would have disproportionately affected seniors residing in the Jack Satterhouse, residents of Revere's working-class neighborhoods, and Revere's immigrant and underserved population. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Wayne Rose. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the 6th day of December in the year of our law, 2021, and on the independence of the United States of America, the 255th. Wayne, thank you so much for your service. Thank you, George. That said, Pat Malkiano is not here because she has a busted knee, and I think, actually, that's who you really kicked. But that said...
Look, Sam, why?
I will be giving these to Peter Martino, and I'm going to ask if you could give this to...
Yes, I would take that.
Thank you so much. And this concludes our presentation. I want to thank you all for working so hard, and I guess it's picture time after you, Wayne. Thank you, everyone.
Calendar item number five, hearing called disordered on the repurposing of the McKinley School Bond Authorization for DPW and Fire Station Projects.
This is a public hearing. We'll hear from proponents. Mr. CFO.
Good evening, Councilor Richard Viskey, CFO, City of Revere. I am here to speak in favor of this repurposing of a $2.5 million bond that was originally authorized in 2014. As you know, we have two fairly big building projects coming up, in the Point of Pines Fire Station and the DPW facility. $22.5 million has already been bonded for the DPW facility. $9.2 million has been bonded for the fire station. Given the times we're in and the supply chain and all the economic turmoil that we're in, we want to make sure that when we put this out to bid, we're able to execute any contracts as they are awarded. Not knowing what the state of the bids will come in, based upon all the uncertainties, we feel like we want to have a hedge on these projects so that we can get these projects going during the winter, get them bid out, and be ready to commence construction in the spring. So the purpose of this is to have this $2.5 million available if needed, if these bids come in higher than anticipated and originally authorized. Again, the $2.5 million has been authorized in 2014. It sits on our books right now, so we're not asking for new debt, necessarily, just a reauthorization of the debt that has been approved, as we research using oppa funds to do stuff with the McKinley School. That's a longer process. So we thought this was a good plan to try to hedge against any uncertainties with these two projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Councilors, Chris Bright, Fire Chief, here to ask you to support the repurpose of the McKinley School Bond. This is essential to move not only the fire station project, but the DPW project forward as we get ready to put the bids together and put them out this winter and to build a fire station this spring. So I'm asking you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? If you dare. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Hearing and seeing none? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Shall the city council approve the repurposing of the McKinley School Bond Authorization for the DPW and Fire Station Projects? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the bond authorization has been approved. Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Chairman Keefe.
President Zambudo, we had four items in front of us this evening. The first two items, number 21-351 and 21-352, they were requests to be withdrawn without prejudice. Those requests were granted favorably, so those two items were withdrawn without prejudice. Madam Clerk, do we need to vote on those tonight? Okay. So...
So we're going to take two separate roll calls on that.
So the request to withdraw without prejudice on the first roll call, Mr. President?
So this is on Council Order 21-351. This is on the special permit application regarding 9 Mountain Avenue. Shall the city council grant the petitioner's request to withdraw the special permit without prejudice? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you. Mr. President, the second item was also requested to be withdrawn without prejudice.
So this is Council Order 21-352. This is the application, special permit application regarding 100 School Street. Shall the city council grant the petitioner's request to withdraw the special permit without prejudice? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the request to withdraw has been approved.
Mr. President, item number eight, 21-402, was re-engineered and represented to the zoning subcommittee. It was now, it has now been reduced down to a total of 11 units, 10 of those being single one-bedroom apartments and one being a two-bedroom apartment. The aesthetic of the entire site has been changed. Also, some of the conditions that were originally requested by site plan have been met, but the petitioner has asked to go in front of site plan again tomorrow morning and come back with a new set of conditions for this next subcommittee. So that will be continued till next week's subcommittee meeting. Thank you. And, Mr. President, the last piece of business in front of zoning, 21-403, the Hyde Street proposal was received unanimously by the subcommittee.
Madam Clerk, want to call the roll?
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the request to withdraw has been approved.
Mr. President, item number eight, 21-402, was re-engineered and represented to the zoning subcommittee. It was now, it has now been reduced down to a total of 11 units, 10 of those being single one-bedroom apartments and one being a two-bedroom apartment. The aesthetic of the entire site has been changed. Also, some of the conditions that were originally requested by site plan have been met, but the petitioner has asked to go in front of site plan again tomorrow morning and come back with a new set of conditions for this next subcommittee. So that will be continued till next week's subcommittee meeting. Thank you. And, Mr. President, the last piece of business in front of zoning, 21-403, the Hyde Street proposal was received unanimously by the subcommittee.
Madam Clerk, want to call the roll?
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Chairman, Vice President, Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had two items on the agenda. 21-277, an ordinance amending meter rates, is remaining in committee for further discussion. And then, item number 2, 21-283, parity salary ordinance for fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2024, was voted out favorably. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, want to call the roll? This is on the salary. My apologies. Order on the second reading, all in favor, all opposed? So audit. Order on the third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed? So audit. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve the parity salary ordinance for employees not represented by collective bargaining? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, God bless. The Appointment Subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we had a couple of items before us, the first being the appointment of Paul J. Fahey as election commissioner. That was voted out favorably. I ask that the council vote that out favorably also on a roll call.
On the appointment of Paul J. Fahey as election commissioner, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Next is 21-407, appointment of Robert Brown to the Commission on Disabilities. I ask, that was voted out favorably, I ask the committee, the whole, do the same. Roll call.
On the appointment of, shall the city council confirm the appointment of Robert Brown to the Commission on Disabilities? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Next is a request for the special municipal employee status for the position of ADA Coordinator, Chair of the Commission on Disabilities. That was voted out favorably. Ask for a roll call.
Shall the city council grant special municipal employee status for the position of ADA Coordinator/Chair of the Commission on Disabilities? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special municipal employee status has been granted.
Mr. President, finally, the appointment of Louis Cavenaro as Building Commissioner. That was voted out favorably. I ask that the city councils do the same. Roll call, please.
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Louis Cavenaro as Building Commissioner? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Mr. President, that concludes the Appointment Subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for many, many years of terrific work as the chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
I know you'll be missed up here.
Thank you.
Next up is motions. Motion presented by councilors Janino and Serino that the city council go on record as supporting the attached letter from Martin Suberg, DEP Commissioner, relative to Winway Solutions.
Councilor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know that this is something that most of the city council will agree with me on, and we respectfully will disagree on some issues, but this is really important, and this is a big step for the city of Revere. And I spoke with Council Serino about this, and I know we share the same remarks, and it's something he's worked on for a long time alongside me. But basically, what happened is, there was a meeting with Suberg a few weeks ago, and the result of that meeting was Representative Turco said, "No, I want something in writing. And I want something in writing that says, this is what this call summarized, and these are our findings and our beliefs." Not just, "Oh, yeah, we agree with you, we don't want it to expand," or "We agree with you, they told them it wouldn't be able to expand anymore 50 years ago." So we got that. And because Representative Turco asked, we got a letter from Suberg addressed to him, basically stating their findings. And there were some big takeaways from that, and one of them is because the marsh is an area of critical environmental concern, that they will not allow any further expansion. So what they're doing right now is, there's, think of it like a W, right? So there are peaks and there are valleys. They're just filling all the valleys because they're allowed to. And eventually, when this maxes out, there's nothing left to fill, and they can only go higher. This letter from Suberg basically said that they don't agree they should be allowed to put any more in once they max out at what they have. So a couple of things happened as a result of that. Representative Turco and I wrote a letter that we'll be reviewing when I see him this week, and we'll be submitting to the Revere City Council, basically saying, "We agree with the findings of the letter, and we support Suberg in this finding. I ask that the Revere City Council join myself and Council Serino," and this is individual, every member can sign on individually to voice their support, because I know that there are, not every councillor's on board, but I'm asking for people to sign on individually. And the third part to this is Representative Turco and I will be submitting our letter, not only to the Revere City Council, but also to the DCR, saying that these were the findings, and this is what we agree. If anyone's interested in reading the entirety of the letter, there's a lot of content, a there's a lot of content, a lot of research in there. I'm happy to email it to them, so you can reach out to me directly, and we can send you the letter from Suberg and a copy of this. It's also all record for the Revere City Council. So if you go onto the city of Revere's website, look at tonight's meeting, and look at the meeting packet, not the agenda, the packet, you can actually search through it and find all of these documents. Thank you.
I guess I need to give a minority report, since I hate to speak against my colleague. However, some of us see the letter differently. All it did, in my opinion, is state the obvious, that it's in an AC, EC area, and that would be a major hurdle to expand the ash landfill. So the bottom line is, nothing's changed. But that, you know, you can interpret it any way you want. I interpret it as status quo. So I certainly won't be supporting your motion. But that doesn't mean it's personal. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, thank you for that. I just ask that we do call the roll on it, and then anyone that votes in favor, we will add them to the letter. Anyone that votes against, we will exclude them from the letter, and we can get this on file.
I think it's simple, you exclude me from the letter and...
Okay. So can we maybe vote to?
At least that's the, that's the history. That's the history of this council. We know that, don't we?
Okay. Thank you. If any other councillors have any objections, feel free to reach out to the clerk, and we can debate you as well. But, thank you.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk, please.
Roll call on the motion. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sereno is absent. Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
No.
No, the motion has been approved. Council item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor request the Revere High School Committee Building Project Team to provide an update on their scope of work from the enactment of this group until present day. Furthermore, that the superintendent of schools provide the student population growth per year since 2010 to present.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. Again, this is not about the school building group. It's about participation of the people. We have a $300 million project that is coming before us, and we have a very minimal amount of participation from the public. When I review the YouTube videos that are presented on the website, and you look at the participation numbers there, it's less than 1,000 people over a, at least four months. That's a very, very small amount. More importantly, when we take a look back to the school building process of the past, when we built the McKinley School, and I believe, excuse me, the Hill School, I believe Counselor Zambudo can probably recall this, that we actually were almost at capacity at that time. And so I'm just hoping that we're building a school of the future that is going to accommodate for the increased growth that's happening within the city. Clearly, we have a 20% increase in the population. This is something that I think we need to look into, and that's why I'm asking the questions. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I've always agreed with Counselor Rotundo's yearning for more public participation. I think it definitely is something to be said. Just as an update, I feel like I wanted to, you know, as being part of that School Building Authority, as well as Counselor Visconti, just giving the City Council a little bit of an update. So the plans are to be in front of the City Council on January 10th, I believe. The project chair wants to present in front of the school committee, and then subsequently in front of the City Council, and then to host a public forum that week as well. So look forward to that near January packet. I believe on January 10th, they'll be presenting to the City Council. And then there'll be a public forum scheduled the week after, because the School Building Authority has heard that they want to try to find ways to solicit more public input. But also, just for some public information, when it's come to some of the, the site itself has currently been honed down to only two potential sites now. And the one potential site that is currently on the school site as it is right now, we have wiped out and taken away any eminent domain takings. So there would be no homes at risk in that neighborhood. That has been taken off the board completely. The only potential for eminent domain would still be if the Wonderland site is considered. So the two sites that it's been honed down to is Wonderland and the current site with zero eminent domain takings. So that's where we're at.
Mr. President.
Mark me in favor of that one.
Thank you, Mr. President. See, this is my issue. The entire process, the people didn't have a say in it. It was just a select group. And this is...
Point of information, they have had a say, whether they've chose to not participate.
All right, I don't want to get into a back and forth. Let's let him talk, then if you need to talk again, you can. Counselor Rotundo, you have the floor.
The people haven't had a say, because quite frankly, they haven't participated in the process. And the issue is, is to be quite honest with you, the process has been confined to a particular timeframe, a particular use of medium, and that's an issue. Before, underneath the school building program, every councillor that's up here that's been a part of that program, it was here, in front of this council, with Paul Dakin, with Mayor Ambrosino, and Carol Ty, and they reported back to us on a weekly basis. We're the ones who are going to sign off on the economics of this, folks. We sign off on this. And they're choosing where it goes without at least giving us a weekly update.
Well, Mr. President.
Counselor Keefe.
I feel it's important to say, and again, I don't disagree with their wanting for more participation. I agree with that. I'm not going to disagree with that. What I'm going to disagree with is, everyone has been given a chance to participate. These are held on Zoom, so you could participate from your pajamas, on your couch. It couldn't be easier. And I'm sorry, but if the councillors, if Counselor Rotundo wanted to join, he could join. You've chosen not to. So if you're so concerned with participation, you should jump in on these meetings. You're invited to them.
Actually, I have, and I've watched on YouTube. And more importantly, I've been told during...
Haven't participated. Watched and participated, two different things.
Okay, and here we're into a back and forth again, and I'm not going to allow it. So I do have a question. Has the minutes of every meeting been distributed to this council?
I don't, I can't answer that.
No, they have not been. And I've served on many building committees. I built five schools, and I participated. I gave all my hours and time and sat at every construction meeting and altered some of the problems that were going to happen because of my construction experience. But what we did do is always issued minutes to the City Council. That has not been done, and I think...
Good point.
You people on the building committee should insist that that happens.
I will do that, I will do that through the next meeting.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And do you have anything, Mr. Vice President?
No, I think Counselor Keefe has said it.
Okay, great. So on the motion, all in, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to talk as...
Name and address, please, for the record.
I'm going to talk as two people right now.
As two people?
First, first, Ralph, first as a private citizen.
Give me the name and the first person that's going to talk.
First, as a private citizen, Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. I'll concur that residents have been able to participate, but, but, public speaking is done in a very unprofessional way at those meetings. You can only make a comment. You cannot ask questions and get a response. And it has to be done at the beginning of the meeting when there are not facts stated of what's going to be happening at the meeting, so you do not see what the proposals are going to be. So that is what the issue is, and that brings a sour taste to the public, to not want to participate in these meetings. So, and I've said that in my comments way back when. I try and attend as many meetings as I can. So now I'm going to put on my other hat, which is Revere Commission on Disabilities, Ralph DeChico, 281 Broadway. And I had stated as day one, when the first meetings is stated, Counsel President Zambudo, you've been on a lot of these school board meetings. There was always, always a person from the Commission on Disabilities on those boards. There is not a person on this school building project from the Commission on Disabilities. Does not have to be me. It could be a chairperson from that. They did not take any of this into account. They say, well, we have, we have people that we have hired as consultants for this. That does not float the boat. They have to be part of the board for this school building project. You try stating this at the meetings, you do not get a response. You only have three minutes, and that's not part of the deal. So these meetings are, I'm sorry to say, are very unprofessional. And they may want to state what they want to state and say what they want to state, but the public can only make a comment at the beginning of the meetings, and it's not relative of what's going to be discussed during the meeting. Thank you.
I agree with you, and I hate to keep bashing the process. However, they didn't reach out to someone who's probably got the most experience in building schools in the city, myself. Not that I'm offended by that. But these points that we're bringing up here, for one, the minutes aren't distributed. For two, perfect example of someone who has a valid point should be on the building committee, and it's not. And the way they're running these meetings don't seem to be in keeping with the way they were run in the past. So there's a reason for that. And I'm not going to get into the details of one of the schools that was the last school that was built, and that there was some controversy because of somebody's personal animus. But we're going to leave that alone. I think there needs to be some changes. I ask my colleagues that are sitting on this committee to help make those changes.